Okay, seeing that the appointed time has arrived, has arrived, the chair opens up the Wednesday, April 30th, 2025, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. North Mashpee, Mass. We're being broadcast live on channels, local channels eight and 1072. We're also streamed live on the channel dash eight. We have a Zoom link that was on the agenda that was made available to the public. Three seven three zero five. For this by Zoom, you will have to raise your hand for the chair to recognize you, and I do that by asking Mashpee TV to watch over that. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast as well. So I'd like to invite everybody to rise with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have minutes from April 16th, 2025.
One, one correction. It's Bob Orsi, O-R-S-I, not Dorsey.
Yes, that is a very good correction.
Motion we approve as written.
Yep.
Okay, so it's a motion to approve as amended, right?
And, and Madam Chair and for the board, there were two sets of minutes in there, and I did make some red lines to some of the kind of technical and nuanced comments that I wanted to be very specific. So perhaps we could also move to approve those
As amended.
Yeah, to include that as well.
It's funny, I saw them on the electronic version. I don't see them here.
We didn't get the second one.
They were on the, they certainly were on the electronic version. I believe this was printed off of the electronic version, so they should be.
Was it, was it still April 16th, 2025?
Yes.
That's what we have.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there another one?
So there were two sets. I didn't see it on the electronic version. I guess it's not in this version. I'm not sure why. I'm pretty sure Hannah printed this off of, off of the online version, but we were having some tech issues.
Oh, you really did have tech issues.
Oh, our Adobe still isn't working. So the tech guys are on it. They're putting in a new license. They put in, we're going to get like a massive upgrade on Adobe.
Oh, good.
They responded very quickly. It just takes some time to process everything.
Let me just quickly check that link. Okay.
There are two, I know, I know there are two versions in the, in the meeting packet.
Bad news, two bad news. Roddy Collins, there's no AC until May 15th.
Okay, let's adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Okay, so I have the electronic package in front of me. Is it still the same date?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just redlined and redlined primarily around the planning department con, comments and only to make sure that certain technical phrases were precisely used.
Okay. So is that okay with the motion that we accept as amended by Michael Richardson and the town planner, Brian Tobin?
Second.
That good?
Corey, give me.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposing, abstaining? No. Passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. So we have some timed issues, items on the agenda. Is, does everybody have an agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there copies on the table for people?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a seven-ten item. We have five minutes. Do we have any report from our board engineer?
Nope, I didn't email anything in.
Okay. Is there anything under old business you'd like to do real quick?
Well, we should sign Island Pickle and Willow Bend now that the appeal's periods have passed.
Okay, do you have those documentations for us to sign?
Yep.
You all gonna sign it, or just you?
I, do we all sign them, or?
So that's the way it's been set up historically in the past, so I just followed the prior format. And so, yeah, there's, there's a signature lying for the entire board on, on each of them.
Rob, did you vote on these?
Yes, the pickle, pickleball.
Pickleball, okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll put pickleball on top, and then Willow Bend will be on bottom.
Okay, so Rob will only do the top one. Oh, you want to start with me?
Okay. And Madam Chair, as you're taking agenda items out of order, did you want to talk about the housing production plan update, or? It's under old business.
Yeah. Want me to do it right now?
No, 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 I was just, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, go right ahead. Anything you want to bring up, under old business, we have four minutes. Go right ahead.
Okay. No, I wasn't sure if you wanted to chat about it, or if you wanted me to. I know we both had conversations with Alexis about a timeline, so.
Rob's, Rob's sat, voted on the, the Island Pickle.
Yep.
So he signs that one.
Thank you.
So I had a conversation with, about the housing production plan with Barrett Planning, Alexa Lanzalata, and she had kind of a clever idea. You know, we have that 30-day public comment?
Yeah.
So she was asking if she gets it to the point where Brian is comfortable releasing it, if we publish it and start the 30-day comment period while we workshop with the housing committee, et cetera. Does that sound good?
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
So, and I think there was some discussion regarding potentially doing an announcement of the beginning of the public comment around the same time as town meeting and potentially doing the workshop.
If it's ready, if it's ready for people to
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
If it's ready for people to view it online, you could ask the moderator to announce that.
Yep. So I just wanted to get some feedback from the board regarding that.
I think that's fine. And then I, I did, I texted David Whedon for the schedule of the housing committee, and I was, usually they're on Tuesdays at 6:30. I think the next one is May 13th. So I was thinking of us going to them, workshopping with them. Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is that okay? There's a lot of new members. It might be a lengthy workshop, but, but I think it's a date that the consultant can be there as well.
All right.
And so we can go through it a little bit. She is interviewing Andrew Gottlieb as well, because he was, he had, he had some very good comments about bringing it to be a clean water plan.
All right.
So, that sound good?
Yeah.
We'll workshop with them.
Yep, and I think there was, you know, some proposed dates to try and get it in front of the select board. One, just before that proposed public comment period would end, so approximately 30 days after May 5th is June 6th, and then there's a select board meeting on June 9th. And then I think the target would be to get it in front of the select board for a final approval on June 23rd, to then get referred to the state. So the goal is, the ultimate goal is to have it referred to the state after the select board meeting on June 23rd. Obviously, it has to also be voted on and approved by the planning board.
Yeah, did you, did we, did we want to workshop with the housing committee, vote on the plan, and then send it to the select board?
I think that's the
Okay. I think if we give them a finished product, that would be better.
Okay. So Mary, actually, you and I haven't had the chance to chat with this since I chatted with Alexis about it, because I chatted with Alexis yesterday, but I thought you were, I thought you had spoken to Alexis about these proposed dates as well, so I just want to make sure.
A little bit.
Okay, all right.
Do they, am I lining up with these?
Yeah.
Okay, go. All right. So that's the HPP.
Yep.
Onward. So just pencil in, May 13th at 6:30.
Yeah.
They'll probably be, be meeting here. Hi, come on in. It's the planning board. It's a, it's a little, the AC isn't on till May 15th. Okay. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the seven-ten public hearing to review the following zoning article proposed for action at the May 5th, 2025 town meeting. Okay, so I'm going to read the public hearing notice into the record. This is a public hearing notice. The Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 30th, 2025, at 7:10, in the Racoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, first floor, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, to consider the following. May 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Article 25, Amending Zoning Bylaw Section
Article 24.
Oops, sorry. Article 24. Let's start again. May 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Article 24, Amending Zoning Bylaw Section 174-45.4 Accessory Apartment, to ensure it is in compliance with the New Affordable Homes Act adopted as state law, which mandates that municipalities' zoning code allow accessory dwelling units in single-family zoning districts as of right, subject to certain terms and conditions. The text of the proposed amendment is on file with the office of the town clerk. It may be reviewed during normal business hours per order of Mary Wagon, Chair, Mashpee Planning Board. Publication dates Friday, April 4th, 2025, and Friday, April 11th, 2025. So in your packet, is this the current bylaw that's in the packet?
So there are a number of items in the packet. The first is the current bylaw, yes, that has the title page for the 2024 bylaws. The second, then, is Article 24, as is presented as a warrant article for town meeting. And then the third is Form 7. What we have, as you and I had discussed after the packet was put together, is presenting red lines to the public. So we have hard copies of the red lines, as well as a summation that basically goes over the, the seven basic categories of the changes. The summation, I'm happy to walk through the board orally, which, you know, as this board is thoroughly familiar with the red lines, as we covered it at three meetings or so. I just made copies for the public if there's extras, so we can see if the board members want it, but I'll give you.
Yeah, can I have a red line version?
Sure.
Oh, I think we should all get the summary of changes.
We don't have that.
Yeah, I think we should. I, I'm going to ask Brian to give us all. So I reported to Brian, there was a little bit of chatter on the internet about the proposed changes to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. And some people felt it was, the proposed bylaw would make it more difficult to have an ADU, that we were introducing more restrictive, a more restrictive bylaw. Actually, the state, with the state passing the Affordable Homes Act, it makes ADUs protected use and by right. So it actually, that law made it easier to have ADUs, and our zoning bylaw was reviewed by town council to come in line with the state law. So we're confident that we're making it easier to have an accessory dwelling unit. So Brian, do you mind going through the summary of changes?
Sure. So that was great context, and that's kind of the first overarching context of the first four general categories of summary changes, which are
Put your microphone really, really, and you might have to use the other one if that one doesn't work.
That one doesn't work. Yeah, we've, we've tried that one before plenty of times.
That's much better.
I hear you.
I should get one of the ones that just clips into my tie or something.
Don't, don't.
I won't do Andrea Bocelli. He has the one on his head. I won't do that one. So, yeah, so the first of the four changes, and again, to piggyback on Mary's, excuse me, to piggyback on Madam Chair's comments, the, this first and foremost is state law, all right? It was the New Affordable Homes Act, and it made accessory dwelling units as of right, which means you only need to pull a building permit. There can't be a special permit or any other local mechanism that is an interim step before pulling a building permit. Made them as of right in single-family zoning districts, subject to certain criteria. So there were provisions in our accessory apartment bylaw that were more restrictive than that, and then also proposed some potential safety issues with the new building code. So all of the changes, or I should say, the overwhelming majority of the changes are to increase rights regarding the ability of people to have ADUs as of right, and also just to be concerned for safety and accessibility. A number of the changes that were made were cosmetic in nature as a byproduct of that. So that's the second category, is what I would call cosmetic changes. All right, so the first four substantive changes, or I should say, the only four categories of substantive changes are as follows. The first is that it eliminates the requirement for owner occupancy. So town council redlined the previous accessory apartment, or the, I should say, the current, I keep saying previous because this still is subject to a town meeting vote to be passed, but the current accessory apartment bylaw provision, which required owner occupancy in the primary dwelling, as well as submission of proof thereof to the building commissioner, for the building commissioner to approve. The second is it eliminates the two-bedroom maximum requirement. So in our by, bylaw as it is, if you're going to do an accessory apartment, you, at most, you can do two bedrooms. The third is it reduces, reduces, not eliminates, parking requirements. And by reducing, what I'm saying is, it does eliminate the one parking space requirement if the ADU itself, or the proposed ADU, is within one-half of a mile from a transit station. And then it sets new size requirements. And what those are, 900 square feet, or 50% of the gross floor area, whichever is smaller, and a minimum of 400 square feet, unless the primary dwelling is 800 square feet or less. And again, that's set up to match and be in line with the state statute and the CMR, while having minimal changes to our code, and also considering the building code and the new provisions, safety provisions there, too. So
Which were brought to us by our building commissioner.
Correct. Yep. So the second category of changes, you know, I would, as, as I mentioned earlier, kind of lump into cosmetic. So it changes definitions. In particular, it adopts the state definition of the accessory dwelling unit, and thereby eliminates our definition of the accessory apartment. Again, we call it our accessory apartment bylaw. The state statute refers to it as the accessory dwelling unit provisions of the New Affordable Homes Act. Next, under cosmetic changes, is it uses those new definitions. So all throughout the bylaw, it swaps out those terms. And then lastly, it adds the state definition for gross floor area. So the state statute defines gross floor area and how it's calculated, and that way, you know, a building commissioner can actually look to what the sizing requirements are of the, of the state law. So that's the summary in a nutshell, and I'm sure if there's anybody here to comment, we're happy to have board discussion, or, yep.
That's all good stuff, right? Don't you?
Yeah.
Rob?
Just one comment. In Mashpee, do we have any transit stations?
I don't know. I mean, there's bus stations, right?
So it, it might be good if we can answer that question for town meeting. I don't think so, because a transit station is not a bus stop, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I honestly don't know. That was, again, it was a byproduct of the town council's
Yeah.
redlines, and there's no definition of transit station. So it's unlike 40A Section 3A, where they define transit station, or MBTA station, or MBTA community, and they gave a whole exhaustive list of everything that constitutes a station. I'm not sure that there is anything out there that tells us exactly what a transit station is on this.
Would you ask the building commissioner?
Sure.
Because he's the one that's going to have to enforce it, so he's the one that's going to have to figure that out.
Yeah.
And that would be good if we could figure that out before town meeting.
Yeah, and, and
So
And it may be good to loop in town council's office
Yeah.
as well, but here's the thing. The other data point is that transit station is not like a capital T, capital S in the red lines that town council's office did, so there probably isn't even a state definition. It's just a speculation, but I'll confirm.
And I think there is a, there is a transportation engineer at the Cape Cod Commission that might have a list of transit stations.
What about Hyannis, when the
The Hyannis has a transit station.
That train comes from New York in the summer.
No, 100%, but I, I guess what I'm trying to pick away at for a point is, it's, really depends on how the state statute is determined, or interpreted from a legal perspective. So
Isn't there one in Bond, too? Are they going to put a station in
There's a transit station.
In Bond that
Bond, that triggered the MBTA.
So that's the case, so that would trigger
I don't think there is one in Mashpee, but if we could have a definitive
Yeah, if, if a transit station equals an MBTA station, then that's one thing. But if a transit station is defined more broadly, then it's another.
I thought what the state says, if a town's close to a transit station, that they, they have to meet that affordable housing.
That's an MBTA.
Yeah, that's a different statute. That's 40A Section 3A. That's for the MBTA communities. That's definitely not applicable to Mashpee.
No.
Yeah.
Any comments from any planning board member? So I'd like to open it up to the public. Does anybody have any comments? It's a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment regarding accessory dwelling units. Is everybody on Zoom, Mashpee TV, that's raising their hands? No? Okay. All right. So with that, I'd like to accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So be.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay. Now we need to make a recommendation to town meeting.
Oh, to town meeting.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd accept a motion to recommend that town meeting approve this proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, standing? Okay, so the motion passes. So that will be our report to the moderator. And can you ask the moderator if, I liked this summary that you pulled together, if you can ask the moderator if we can put copies of that out where people check in to, registered voters check in to go into town meeting?
Yeah, 100%. And I had a conversation with town manager's office as well, and they're just going to have legal check that box first, and then we're going to go to the moderator and make sure it's good.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. So that's the seven-ten public hearing, the seven-twenty public hearing. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the seven-twenty public hearing. The applicant is Shellback Development LLC. The location is 647
The location is 647 Falmouth Road, 9 Shellback Way. Special permit to construct a 13,229 plus or minus square foot specialty retail grocery store on 3.97 plus or minus acres of undeveloped land pursuant to Sections 174-24C and 174-25E1 and E2 of the Mashpee zoning by law. Okay. So I have to read the public notice into the record. Public hearing notice. This notice is given pursuant to the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, regarding a public hearing to be held by the Mashpee Planning Board under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, on Wednesday, April 30th, 2025, at 7:20, in the La Coyette Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, to review a special permit application from Shellback Development LLC to construct a 13,229 square foot plus or minus specialty retail grocery store on 3.97 plus or minus acres of undeveloped land with frontage on Falmouth Road, Route 28, and Shellback Way pursuant to Sections 174-24C and 174-25E1 and E2 of the Mashpee zoning by law at 647 Falmouth Road slash 9 Shellback Way, Sessions Map 81 Block 132. Submitted by Mary E. Wagon, Chair, Mashpee Planning Board. Publication dates Friday, April 11th, 2025, and Friday, April 18th, 2025. So I just want to let the public know that this development, because of the size of the building, is an automatic referral to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. So get used to those words, Cape Cod Commission, and development of regional impact. And so it's going to require a pretty thorough review by the Cape Cod Commission. So it's something that, any abutter that's here tonight, or a resident, or citizen that's here tonight, is interested in this matter, if the board votes to send it to the Cape Cod Commission, which I, because it's mandatory, I think that's going to happen, it's something that you should participate in that public process, too. I won't be able to take public comment on this matter until it's done, what, by, sorry, until the Cape Cod Commission has issued a decision on the matter. What I'm going to ask is for the, the motion to send this, to refer this to the Cape Cod Commission, also has a provision that all of the abutters that were notified via this public hearing notice will again be notified in the same way, that there'll be a newspaper, there'll be two newspaper ads, plus the abutters notification sent out, so that everybody is re-notified when it comes back. These reviews by the Cape Cod Commission can take months. Sometimes they can take over a year. Sometimes they can take any lo, they can take longer. So as Chair, I think it's only right that we re-notify all the abutters in Mashpee when it comes back to the planning board for review. So, is everybody on the planning board under?
Yeah.
Explain that okay? Brian, if it's okay with you, I'll accept a motion-
So be.
-to refer this project to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact, and that when it, after the decision is rendered by the Cape Cod Commission, and it comes back to the planning board for review-
Re-notify.
-that we re-notify the abutters and post the legal notice in the newspaper.
So be.
Second.
Any discussion? Anything to add, Brian? No? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, so the motion passes. So now, we sign this piece of paper, and the whole thing goes to the Cape Cod Commission. They have a really great website where you can watch their meetings on Zoom. They used to have at least one meeting in the host town.
Yeah.
I hope they continue that tradition. And that's about it. Okay. So I'm going to go on to the next matter, and you'll be re-notified when it comes back Thank you all for coming.
I hate that.
I know.
So, right on time, Glenn, it's 7:30. So we have a visitor from the Friends of the National Wildlife Refuge. It's Glenn Davis, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. And I believe he's, he's there, he's the president of the Friends, and it's regarding a town meeting article that would, if passes town meeting on May 5th, would establish an area for visitor centers, a visitor center on Route 28. So with, no further ado, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mary. Should I stand here?
I think so. Is there a mic? Grab one of the mics and, and talk right into it, because people at home, otherwise they won't be able to hear you.
Okay. Again, I'm Glenn Davis. I am actually co-president of the Friends of the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge. Our other co-president is Mary Kay Fox.
Oh, hi, Mary Kate, how are you?
We have a proposal. We have a warrant article, town meeting next week. It's Article 26. And basically, what the article is saying is for, is to authorize the select board to negotiate a lease with the Friends of the Refuge to establish a visitor center at a site located at 966 Falmouth Road. I think you're all familiar with the Refuge. I'm, I'm going to kind of go through these slides pretty quickly. So stop me if you have any questions. Leave room for questions at the end. The Refuge is actually celebrating its 30th anniversary this month.
Wow.
That's, that's, that's a big deal for us. I'm relatively new to the organization. I wasn't there back in 1995. But the Refuge is very unique. It's, it encompasses nearly 6,000 acres, mostly in Mashpee, a little bit in Falmouth. It is a partnership of nine federal, state, local, tribal, private organizations. And still, after 30 years, we do not have a visitor center, so we, we hope to change that as soon as possible. In the beginning of this year, we held some facilitated planning discussions at the La Coyette Bay Reserve among the Refuge partners, came up with a lot of goals, needs, what we were looking for in terms of what type of facility. Basically, I mean, one of the most important needs is, is really just to enhance the open space visitor experience in Mashpee, strengthen the collaboration among the partners, increase public engagement, outreach, and education, which are actually two of our, our key, key elements in our, our mission, the Friends' mission. Build new connections to Refuge, Refuge lands, and to allow us additional fundraising opportunities in nature store, plant sales, et cetera. This is, we believe this is very good for Mashpee. It will not only be good for the residents of Mashpee, to improve access to, to the trails within the Refuge, education about what's, what's going on in the Refuge, promote the Refuge as a tourism destination for visitors to Mashpee and, and to the Cape. And again, reinforce the strong collaboration of all of the Refuge partners. We all kind of share goals to protect, enhance, and restore wildlife habitats. We also will include native pollinator gardens, visual, native pollinator gardens, visual examples for the public, homeowners, businesses, and also, we collaborate with other conservation organizations that are not part of the Refuge partners, but are still fairly involved in many of our activities, the trustees of reservations, the APCC, and the Mass National Guard, Natural Resources Department. The visitor center, as proposed, will include both indoor and outdoor exhibits, kiosks, classroom, meeting space, pollinator gardens, greenhouses, office spaces, a center of operations for our Friends organization, as well as fundraising opportunities in nature store, selling books, t-shirts, merchandise, plant, plant sales. It's not going to be a, we haven't designed the building yet, but it's not going to be a, an ultra-modern building. It will certainly adhere to what we've referred to as kind of a Cape Cod style and, and character. We have support for the visitor center at 966 Falmouth Road. We have, it has been unanimously supported by the select board, by the finance committee, by the conservation commission. It is supported by the town manager. It is supported by the Mashpee Refuge Partnership, and we hope after tonight, we will add to that list the planning board, and hoping to get your, your unanimous support before we go into town meeting next week. And we also hope to have overwhelming, if not unanimous, support at town meeting next The site itself, it is just to the south of the South Cape, South Cape Resort, the tennis courts that are-
All right, yeah.
-right on Route 28. It is, there is an existing access road that leads to the resort. It also goes back to Leclerc Village. So we share that access road. There is an existing parking lot. Other than that, the site is undeveloped. We will, we are a conservation organization. We're not going to clear cut the entire type, the entire site, or could we if we wanted to? So it will be, we will be very good stewards of the land there. Any trees that are cleared for the buildings, greenhouses, whatnot, any additional space that is cleared, we will be replacing that with native gardens, pollinator gardens, and other native plantings. And finally, our next steps, immediately after town meeting, after the town meeting vote, assuming it is positive, we are moving forward with an engineering site plan. We're working with Cape and Islands Engineering, and also with an architectural firm to start giving us some general conceptual designs on, on the site. We'll be starting our negotiations of a lease with the town manager. That lease, we think, will be a 99, either a 30-year or a 99-year lease on the site, no cost lease, or a dollar a year, or something like that. We will be exploring funding, grant opportunities. The first two items on the, on that list are already funded. They were funded by a state earmark. We received a $30,000 earmark in the state budget for the current fiscal year, so that money has to be spent by the, by June 30th. And then moving forward, we have a couple of very promising grant opportunities that will allow us to purchase one or two greenhouses, very high-end greenhouses, to put on the site. And then, obviously, we have a lot of additional fundraising to go before we really start talking about buildings and what's going to be there. So again, we, we hope to get your support on this. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
On the building, it'd be nice to go with the Native Americans, like the long two, the long house, that type of building, you know, like, like a turtle, because that's their symbol, is the turtle.
Okay.
And because they were the first people on this land, and it'd be a nice sentence like that. And another thing, where you put in the building, now I park in there, and I want to go walk on the trails, but I want to go on the other side, like behind Mashpee Carmen's.
Right.
Are you going to have any parking spaces, like throughout the 6,000 acres, or it's once parked there, then you, I'm just scared-
Being across the street, some parking spots across the street?
Good question. I should have mentioned that. Right now, there isn't direct access to the Refuge from this site.
Aye.
But however, directly across 28 is the Quashnet River-
Yep.
-trail network, and also just to the north of it are the Mashpee Pine Barrens.
Yeah, that's what I was going to, the pine barrens, but it'd be nice to have like a map saying, here's where the pine barrens are. There are, there's kettle holes over here, or there's certain type of pond over here, different type of trees up in the north part.
Yeah, no, we, we are planning a lot of informational kiosks, large maps of the Refuge, where you can go, because you can't walk to get to the entire 6,000 acres-
No.
...of the Refuge from this site, but the kiosks and the information will have trail maps available, will guide people to those other sites where there are parking lots and where people can go and walk.
So this, this isn't, this is not intended to be trailhead parking?
No, no, it's not.
Okay.
Except for, there will be some display gardens, as, as well as information-
But all on one side of Route 28?
Yes.
Okay.
My, my, my last question. What's this is, Bill, how, how do we fund this? You know, because you're going to have to hire people. I mean, I, am I going there, I have to pay a fee, like $10?
No, absolutely not. No, the, the Refuge is free to visitors, all of the trailheads, there's, there's no fee, I believe. I don't think any of the, the National Park Service, National Parks have fees. The National Wildlife Refugees do not have fees.
So-
And that won't change.
Where do you get the money to keep the building open? The heat, the electrical? And paying the ploy, you know?
That's to figure out.
Yeah.
I mean, there, you all-
We need some, some, we'll be applying for private grants, possibly CPC funding. We haven't really gone too far with a capital campaign for this, but, but there will be. We do have, I mean, the Friends do have an endowment fund.
Yeah, so that's like an every-year thing, then, every, like, we have to, you'll have fundraising to keep this going? Is that's going to be one of the ways?
Yes, yes. And even in terms of whatever we're building, we're, we're looking at a phased approach.
All right.
Not going to do it all at once.
No, but-
It's not all going to happen, you know, town meeting vote, it's all going to be done by, you know, July 15th. Absolutely not. This will be a phased approach over several years.
We waited this long, this, to have the idea come up. We should have done this years ago.
To get here. But also, just, just to address your first question, the Wampanoag Tribe is one of the partners in the Refuge, and they have been involved in the planning of this.
Okay.
So they, they've been involved in our planning sessions, and they will continue to be involved in what we are building on the site, and how we're going about building it.
Yeah.
Even in terms of, they have requested- Even in terms of, they have requested that any trees that we cut down, that the firewood might be provided to the tribe, to tribal members.
I suggested that a couple of times when it cut trees down.
Very carefully with the tribe.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the next time you look at the headquarters, the Tribal Community Center, you'll look at the architecture. Because that's a really good idea, that you have up here, you know, Cape Cod style, but there's another architectural vernacular that we embrace too, right? And it might be very interesting to have that.
I would hope, thank you for coming, I would hope that it's not Cape Cod style. I feel it should be a more historical, important building. I mean, your idea is a great idea. Maybe not that, maybe not extreme, but something woodsy that's timeless. Cape Cod architecture in there does not feel right to me. I mean, that's just my feeling. How many?
That request for the Cape Cod style actually came from the Town Manager. So, but that's not cast in stone.
No.
He's, right, so I, usually people use that because they want it to be something that fits in with our town character, and I think he would be.
But we're not looking for something ultra-modern.
No.
Something a little bit woodsy there was, and I don't have a picture of this with me today, but there was a very early rendition that Tom Fadala, who I know you all know, did back in 1997. And we still have that, and we still use that a little bit, whether it will actually.
I was on the board with him, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whether it will actually look like his design, that remains to be seen.
Yeah.
What about, have you talked about the square footage? Because you'd be building a building and a kiosk.
Yeah.
Which could be just self-service.
Yeah, well, also, there will be outside of the building, a large, I guess we're calling it kind of a welcome center. There was another site that we were looking at that had a beautiful, kind of concrete with benches and kiosks for different informational kiosks, kind of all surrounding this area, whether it's concrete or grass.
Multiple kiosks?
Yes, I mean, where we do, I mean, small kiosks, signage, you know, when I say kiosk, I don't mean, you know, multiple large installations. But where the Refuge does represent the management of nine different partners, we want to highlight the work that those nine partners are doing in Refuge. So, yes, that would be.
How big, have you talked about how big, how many square feet we're talking about for the main building?
We're not quite there yet. Probably a footprint, maybe, it could be 2,000 square feet, possibly larger. It depends how much of it will be outside versus the building itself. The building itself, we would like some indoor exhibits, some indoor, kind of a multi-use room with classroom space.
Classrooms, yeah.
Small classroom, but a place where we can give presentations and educational presentations to the public.
Sounds nice.
So this is town-owned land, right?
This is.
It's owned by the town of Mashpee?
The site is owned by the town, yes.
Okay.
That's good.
That's why there needs to be a license to use it, or a lease to use it, okay.
And we've been working very closely with the Conservation Department.
Okay.
Is any of that land conservation land?
Behind it is.
The, well, across the street is conservation land, and the Mashpee Pine Barrens is conservation land.
Yeah.
This property is not conservation land.
It's right near Leclaire Village, correct, Glenn?
Yeah. Yeah, that, in that lower right-hand image, the dirt area, which is no longer dirt, but that's an old image.
That's the site.
Leclaire Village right there.
Okay.
And actually, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I had one other question for Glenn. Glenn, just doubling back on the point about financing, the Friends, are you all an independent nonprofit, 501(c)(3) corporation? So then donations to you are tax deductible, correct?
What was the question?
Donations to your organization are tax deductible?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we're 501(c)(3).
And there's information on your webpage about how to donate, right?
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Hey, Rob, go ahead.
And, yeah, long overdue. One of the most successful nature information and just nice things is a butterfly garden, which they have in Brewster at the National, people that go there, and that's a pay to go in through there and whatever, but it's very successful. I enjoyed it myself, my grandchildren, pretty much everybody that walks through the door goes into the butterfly garden. Is, I know you're just starting out, but I would think maybe you could make a note that in the future, somewhere, maybe that could be on the plan.
We're not ruling anything out at this point. So we're open to all ideas. We will have pollinator gardens that are obviously, you know, butterflies being one of the pollinators that we are looking to attract.
And, you know, the way they run it up in Brewster, they buy monarch butterflies, primarily it's the monarchs, a couple of different varieties of them, and they don't release them, it's all self-contained, but it's an enjoyable experience.
This is one of the enclosed.
Right, right, it's got to be enclosed.
Talking about, yeah. Something to think about.
Yeah, another.
I think they have pop-ups for those.
Yeah.
They have temporary structures, yeah. But it is, it's an incredible draw, it's just, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, and what some.
I have photographs of, I used to have longer hair, and there would be about four or five monarchs, and my grandkids would just love it. And they'd take that, one of them had a little camera, and there must be 100 pictures of monarchs in my hair.
That's great.
So I just, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Because if there's anything on the agenda, I was a little distracted before, but I usually say, if there's anything on the agenda that people want to talk about, just let me know, and I will recognize you. But I really like this.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Project, and I think that I would entertain a motion to recommend passage by town meeting.
So, very good.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Double aye.
Double aye.
Start them all.
So you can add us to that list.
We certainly will, thank you.
And thank you for coming! This is so great to see you all.
This is probably long overdue for us to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everything in its own time, right? Thank you, so good seeing you all. All right, so, back to old business, pre-existing non-conforming structures formerly proposed, raised and replaced by law. It's rebranded, rebranded non-conforming structures. Watch out. Go ahead, sorry, go ahead, I'm going to recognize the town planner, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so just a quick update there, since the last meeting, we had discussed the concept of a subcommittee. Since the last meeting, I was able to get in touch with Bob Orsi, who was vocal on behalf of Pampa Nisset, and he is excited about participating in the subcommittee. I also reached out to Glenn McCarthy at the suggestion of Madam Chair, and he is also very interested, mentioning that he would be available in person throughout the summertime until September, and would also be willing to attend virtually as it's amended and edited over the fall, again, with the goal of presenting something for the spring town meeting. What that does, as of right now, is puts us in a position where we have a four-member subcommittee, so I think it would be great to get at least one more member, so that way, if we ever do anything formal, like voting or something like that, we have a tiebreaker.
But then you'd have quorum.
Well, not if they're all, not if, to have quorum, you have to have people on a.
Oh, you don't want three planning board members?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So who's on the committee right now?
So it's Karen, Mike.
I won't be on the planning board.
Right, after elections, Mike will no longer be a planning board member, and then.
Bob, Orsi.
Bob, Glenn.
And Glenn.
Yeah.
Looking for a fifth?
Yeah, I'm thinking somebody with either, like, conservation expertise or floodplain. Oh, I was hoping it, I was hoping the committee would be entirely members of the public that have an interest in this.
Oh, okay.
And town officials, obviously, will be attending the meetings and providing their expertise, and then going back and discussing things with one another, and then, you know, sharing information with the committee members, but, yeah.
I can't, I can't really remember if anybody else approached us on this. Would this be the only neighborhood impacted?
Well, I don't know, to be candid, because it may look like, you know, there may be two subsets. There may be something for Pampa Nisset, and then there may be just general adjustments for the overall town bylaw.
That's what we were talking about originally.
Yeah. So if that's what it's going to look like, then it's not necessarily Poppy-specific. But, I mean, I, candidly, I personally think the section of our bylaw that addresses 48, Section 6, at a minimum, needs some light tweaking for clarity, so applicants know when they're going for a Section 6 finding, a special permit, or, and/or a variance. I think there's some light adjustments to the phraseology there that are necessary anyway. So that's one issue. But then there's the larger issue of dealing with pre-existing non-conforming structures, how best to handle any enlargements there too, and whether to treat Poppy different from the overarching bylaw.
Right, whether it's a district or townwide.
Oh, yeah.
So it might be nice to have somebody who's, you know, savvy on floodplains.
Yeah, I'm thinking floodplains or conservation, you know?
Yeah.
Because we've got the whole Reg 25, Reg 25 is going to be a big dynamic, you know? But there's, you know, there's.
Is there, is.
John Malloy, but I don't know. Would he be the right guy or not? Yeah, so, but he's one.
Do you guys have an architectural board or anything like that?
Here?
No, in Poppy, or is that just New Seabird?
Just New Seabird.
Just New Seabird. I don't want to.
But there's a kid, you know, the guy named Chris Conti, who's down that way. I don't know if you know, he's a retired guy, he might be real, I don't know. You know Chris Conti and John Malloy?
Okay, I'll reach out. Chris Conti and John Malloy.
How, yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm not either.
I'm not either.
I mean.
Why you looking at me?
So, so, we have a membership of, we have a subcommittee of four.
Yeah.
Right? Brian is concerned that it's an even.
Oh, yeah, it is.
You know?
But Brian wants somebody from the public, right?
Preferably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this initiative has a long history, it predates me, a lot of folks are very involved and invested in it, so I very much want to accurately reflect the voice of the people on it, so.
The problem is that the four people that you have are very well-balanced. Do you know what I mean?
Sure. That's a good problem to have, though.
So we should be thinking about somebody who's involved in conservation and.
But hasn't really stated a strong opinion yet.
And understood FEMA.
I would try to get somebody who has FEMA experience.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Can we get Steve Cook?
Steve Cook.
Who is Steve Cook?
How about Steve Cook?
He's a designer from Kootenai, but he's on the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, he'd be a good one.
Yeah.
Big guy.
And he does development, right, I mean, doesn't he? So he's, yeah, and I think that would be, that would really complement.
Great.
Yep.
So I'll reach out to.
I think he's going to have him get in touch with you, if you want.
Sure, yeah. That makes my job easier than having to track him down.
Yeah, he's, yeah.
Yeah.
He lives regulations day and night.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and very balanced, so, all right, good. Wow. Anything else on that?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, great, that's great. All right, so then we looked at Island Pickle, Willow, then we signed those. The Housing Production Plan, was there anybody here that wanted to say anything about the Housing Production Plan? May 13th might be a really interesting meeting to go to. Mashpee Rotary Improvement Update, I have no update, because I didn't do the letter, so sorry.
Okay.
The Rotary is still round.
The Rotary is still round. New Business, Willow Circle Bond Reduction Request and Landscaping Plan.
Yes. So those materials should be in your packet. This is a subdivision with a bit of a long history. It was originally subject to a covenant, as you can see from the materials in your packet. This board then voted to release that covenant and make the project subject to a tripartite agreement. The amount of the tripartite agreement has been revised and reduced once in the past, and the applicant upon completion of additional line items that were reviewed and approved by the town engineer, who also has since made a request for an additional reduction, and the town engineer has stated, for the record, that the request is reasonable, given the outstanding items to continue to work on.
All right, so this has like a cover page that looks like this.
Correct. And I take you through the full history there. Unfortunately, this time, it didn't print in color, so not everything is highlighted, but I think the punchline is shown on the last three to five pages. With the last page, I'm happy to read into the record, which is what we would ultimately be voting to approve, and Mary, you would sign after that vote.
There's a spreadsheet?
Yep, the spreadsheet is.
Bond Reduction Request?
Yep, that's the first of those last three to four pages. If you can tell, in gray, it's highlighted.
Yeah.
The amounts, the original bond was approximately $357,000. In November 1st, and by bond, we of course mean the amount of the tripartite agreement. On November 1st, 2023, it was reduced by approximately $142,000, making the current bond balance approximately $215,000. The amount of the present reduction request is approximately $80,000, it's $79,818, to be precise. When netted out, that would leave the current amount to complete and the current amount of the tripartite agreement to be $135,000, $135,709. You can see that there's still some final paving left to do. There's, the only landscaping left to do is in the buffer, so additional landscaping has been completed, the sign has been completed, the pump-out-catch basins are not yet completed, the final as-built plan has obviously not yet been completed. And regarding the fencing along Orchard Row to Butters, when this point actually dovetails next into the second subcategory of the Willow Circle issues that we're looking at today, but only the fence behind Lot 1 is yet to be completed. So Ed's looked at the numbers, and he believes that they're reasonable.
All right, so he sent an email, April 16th, 2025, stating to Brian, "Last Thursday, April 10th, I visited the Willow Circle subdivision site with the developer slash applicant, Scott Miller, and his son, Brian. I confirmed that some of the site landscaping, street signage, fencing has been satisfactorily completed. As a result, I recommend that the Planning Board approve the reduction of $79,818 from the current bond balance of $215,527."
So that would leave a remaining balance of $135,709.
Yep, so I also want to confirm that the remaining balance of $135,709 for the remaining work. for the remaining work items is adequate for the completion and closeout of the project. And then he's got this chart. See the updated list of incomplete work and estimates with a fifty percent markup below. So he put in the fifty percent already.
I, I know in, there's, in here is the landscaper letter saying he wants to put the trees inside the fence.
So that's the second, that's the second issue. That's not directly related to this issue. Um, and Dennis and I both did a site visit and we have some comments along those lines. So we just wanna get the vote on the bond reduction first. Um, and the reason why you know it's not related is because this bond reduction includes doing the landscaping as per the plans. Um, and I think the solution Dennis and I have come up with may actually even be less money, so we'll actually technically be holding back more, so.
So we have this, this is the letter that you want us to.
That's who would be signing off on, and I have a copy that's not double-printed for you to actually sign, Mary.
It's dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. It's addressed to Silver Development. Says that at our meeting, we reviewed the request to reduce the value retained by your mortgage in the form of a tripartite agreement recorded in the bond registry of deeds, book three, five, six, two, four, page eighty-five. You specifically requested that the value retained be reduced by seventy-nine thousand, eight, one, eight, such that the remaining total of a hundred and thirty-five, seven oh nine. Oh, the remaining total will be a hundred and thirty-five, seven oh nine. You stated in your request that the landscaping requirements and subdivision approval have been substantially satisfied and that the final paving has not been completed and the only landscaping remaining is the buffer. The sign is completed, the pump-out catch basins are not completed, nor is the final built plan. And that the only fence that remains to be completed is behind lot one.
And the second paragraph just talks about how Ed.
As subsequent to the engineer's recommendation, the planning board voted unanimously to reduce the value retained in the subject tripartite agreement by one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
And obviously, if we don't get a unanimous vote, I'll just cross out unanimous before Mary signs. And write in a number.
So that's the amount, right? Reduce it by one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So I'd, I'd entertain a motion?
So be.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, one quick pause. Uh, the value retained to be reduced, no, I'm sorry, that is a typo. Let me fix that, one forty-one, nine, nine, eight. That should be seventy-nine, eight, one, eight, which is stated at the top and then just for whatever reason did not carry forward towards the bottom.
Okay, so.
So I'll put a line through that.
I'd entertain a motion that, um, the planning board moved to unanimously vote, vote, sorry, vote to reduce the value retained in the subject tripartite agreement by seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
So move.
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, success.
Rob, pass them.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, chairs report. You don't wanna know what I've been up to.
Okay, well, what happened to the trees?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, let's talk about the trees.
Sorry, sorry. Let's go back. There's a letter in here.
Always count on Karen.
April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, yeah, cause of the trees, from Kadash Landscaping, regarding lot one Willow Circle Buffer Tree Planting, okay.
So here's, here's the backstory there. Dennis, do you mind if I start? I'll kick it off and then you can jump in? All right, so he had, um, his landscape architect, I believe, go out there and take a second look. Because his tree preservation bylaw plan was originally, uh, produced by an engineer. Now, the reason why he did a tree preservation bylaw plan for this lot and not for any of the other lots in the subdivision is that he pulled the building permit for this lot after the tree preservation bylaw was passed by a town meeting and approved by the Attorney General's Office. So it wasn't applicable to the other lots, it is to this. So he had, did a tree preservation bylaw plan with his engineer, um, it was approved by the town. He had a landscape architect, uh, slash certified arborist then go out there and walk the site. Um, and took a look at the presently existing pitch pines in the location where a number of the plantings are gonna be. And without, he, if he does not cut down those pitch pines, the shadow from them, because they're all probably north of thirty feet tall at least. I mean, maybe even getting up towards sixty feet. Uh, they're fairly mature trees. The shadow of those pitch pines will kill anything he plants at the present location. So he first came to me and said, listen, I'm trying to do the right thing here. I don't wanna have to go through a whole huge process of having an engineer redesign plans and incur those extra costs. I can just plant the trees as they are, you know, on the plan, but if I do that, they're gonna die because they're just not gonna get enough sun. Um, so my thoughts are, I wanna move the fence, um, and so that it would be different from what's on the plans, and then I'll plant the trees on the inside. So Dennis and I went out there and we walked the site, and I don't know if you wanna jump in here, or if you want me to keep going.
First of all, it's, it's like the buffer, we have to try to keep up where the trees are, right? They're nice, mature trees.
They're beautiful.
And it's, I can't see cutting them down to plant up some trees that are ten feet high now. Those trees been there for probably a hundred years. And another thing, we're, we're looking at affordable housing. There's three bird's nests up there and one squirrel's nest. We're gonna cut their homes down to plant some smaller trees. I mean, to, to be serious, we don't look at the animals. When you cut the tree down, animals lose their houses and, and their food, you know, like from the nuts and stuff. That's another thing, they always baffle me like, wow, we cut these trees down, even when a dead tree's there. You shouldn't leave them up because the woodpeckers and stuff go after them.
That's a problem for me, but I know that's the, the way it is.
Yeah, I'm kinda like joking, but I'm serious. I was looking at them there. Why, you cut these trees down? Those birds are gonna lose their nests, and that poor squirrel, that, I don't like squirrels, cause they went into my house the other, last week. But, you know, you're losing all their houses, I, you know?
So where is this on?
So lot one is the first lot on the left when you pull into Willow Circle.
All these trees here, it's like a, you know, they're trying to keep their buffers open.
So it's right at the entrance.
That's what it is, and he wants to cut them down so the plants, eat plants behind these houses, uh, grow. If you don't, if you don't cut them down, those trees won't grow. Maybe they went down at the end, but these ones here, they're dying a couple of years.
That's a nice little wooded corner.
They look nice, yeah, and they create extra privacy, and I do have from, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
I do have a written representation from the applicant that I got in shortly before this meeting, so it's, it's not in your packets. And I haven't yet had the chance to confirm with the actual abutter, but there is a singular abutter on the backside of lot one. Uh, and the representation that the applicant made to me is that she would actually prefer just to keep those trees. And doesn't really care about having new.
Okay.
Plantings, so.
The Willow Circle house is very close.
Yeah.
So what if, what do we?
Actually, Madam Chair, my apologies, I did not realize Scott Miller, the applicant, is here in the audience, so perhaps we should give him an opportunity to speak.
I figured you guys talk first. Yeah, what I'm trying to do is not create an undue burden for a future homeowner. So I, I, I wanna comply with the subdivision approval, which has the new trees behind the fence. But I talked to the abutter, Carol Souza, and she would prefer not to have those trees. She would rather see the existing trees that we stay, that we saved and not some ornamental trees that are just plopped in front of the, her side of the fence. So what we're trying to do is not plant those trees there because of the existing trees. And if I do plant those trees.
Modification to the landscaping plan.
Yeah.
I just wanna follow.
Yes.
And I think it's a minor modification.
I think that, that the, the landscaping plan needs to be redlined, right, and marked up. What are the things you're not going to do? Cause what will happen is, you could go, try to go get your certificate of occupancy, and they'll say, oh, this says you're supposed to have these trees there. So the best thing to do is to document this.
Right, so what I was.
I think we're kind of all on board to, to, to remove that, to, to mark on the land, the adopted landscaping plan, the approved landscaping plan, that the planning board is fine with these landscaping elements not being installed.
Exactly, and, and so, you know, with the tree preservation bylaw, so, I planted significant amounts of trees there, especially at the entryway. And under the tree preservation bylaw, which I've read a million times, um, you're allowed to replant on abutting properties, like across the street or next to it. So what, what's not even factored in, I didn't, I used the new planting trees behind the fence for the tree preservation bylaw, because I had to plant them anyway. Now, if we remove those, to your point, um, I still have to get a certificate of occupancy and comply with the tree bylaw. What I would do is, I would have our engineer show the other trees, the offset is the other trees that I've already planted, so we should, we should be fine with that. I wanted to talk to Brian about coming before you folks, is just so that, um, I don't complete the subdivision. And then there's an issue that the trees behind the.
Yeah.
Right, so we.
Weren't planted in accordance with the subdivision approval. So as long as you guys give that approval.
We need to, we need to see it, though.
Right, no.
Do you know what I mean? So I think we're all on board to do this. We just need the documentation so we're clear what you're not gonna plant, so that we can vote on it. And it's in the file, and that way the building commissioner won't have any questions.
Right.
That's easy enough, cause those trees are demarcated on the plan I sent you this morning.
Right, which is a separate, which is a separate plan, so there's just some formalities here. That plan is departmental, uh, with Planning Department and Building Commissioner. That's the tree preservation bylaw. What Mary's referring to, like, so the reason why we're here is it's a toe in the water before the applicant makes any revisions, uh, to make sure the, the board, you know, it's kind of a temperature check, to make sure the board's okay with it. So the revisions to the act, we will need to modify the special permit and the landscaping plan on the subdivision. But the revisions can be minor in the sense that there are cost savings, because you can effectively just put in a statement. And with this approach, you're not moving the fence, so the fence is gonna be in the same location. And you can simply put in a statement to say, trees, you know, in the area behind lot one shall remain, you know, as prior to, something to that effect. And that shouldn't be too costly. So that, that's what we were trying to do, is troubleshoot away, because the applicant was coming to us, trying to do the right thing, make it so that we can do that, yet still adhere to all the formalities and not kind of, you know, create too undue of a burden financially for the applicant.
As long as it's documented.
Yeah.
Right, so I, I've seen that happen. There's the approved landscape. People, they make notations on it, sign it, date it, and then it's documented. And if we take a formal vote, which is what I recommend that we do.
We will.
That, that vote is then in the plans. Because I, I do have to say that the building commissioner has been working with an abutter of a, a special permit.
Yeah.
And they've been out there with, you know, measuring tape in between the trees. So I think that our building commissioner might be like, oh, I better check, you know what I mean, like?
No problem.
There's been a lot of focus on him about that, and I, I.
And I, I spoke to Dave, and he's on board with this approach too. And then, uh, you know, I'll just, I'll give the abutter a call myself, just so I can speak to her directly.
Should be happening.
Yeah, yeah.
So this will be on our agenda the next time?
By chance?
Uh, there was, uh, there was a mix of Leland Cypress, Hemlock, and, um, I think Green Giant Arbivides.
I have specific, this has happened to me. I put four Lelands in a shady area, and we had to cut them out.
Yeah.
They just died.
Yeah.
They got, they had filtered sunlight, so you'd never plant trees.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna put them in, comply with the subdivision, finish it, and then two years later, I'm getting a call from the homeowner saying, all these trees are dead, and then the, the abutter's like, I'm looking at dead trees.
Yeah. Now, as a town planner, this was a great phone call to get, so I really do commend the applicant for being so courteous as to reach out and help us troubleshoot, you know?
Yeah. We, we meet next Wednesday.
Yeah, and this can be a public meeting, cause it's a minor modification, so it depends on how quickly you can just get that statement on the plans that just says.
So do we vote on it as a minor modification now, or do we wait?
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
Can't hurt to do that, you know? And, but you still do the approval vote after you see the plans, like, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So we don't have to, right.
Great, thank you for your help.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, town planner report.
Uh, I don't really have anything, other than, I wasn't sure if we wanted to unpack the HPP, uh, plan a, a little bit more, but, you know.
I don't think so. I mean, the, the consultant is, is finishing it up.
Yep.
And as long as you feel that it's ready for prime time, post it on the website and start the public comment period.
Great.
Um, so.
Okay.
Do you have any contacts and that contact information for the people that, uh, live nearby? Have they been, do they call you or email you about stuff?
Live nearby where?
Um, two oh nine Old Mansible.
Um, so I have had folks come in and informally share opinions about that, but never, like, identify their residences. And it seems like.
Well, here's the deal, they are the ones that requested the thirty-day comment period, so it'd be nice to.
Oh, interesting, I was not aware of that. That is an excellent data point.
So, um, we should make sure that, that we get in touch with them.
At least let them know, right, right, I think. They asked for something.
I'm not sure if I have their contact info.
I ain't get it, but I didn't know.
Well, so the other thing too is.
I think that they, we might have to look through the minutes, cause they, haven't they done public comment? Oh, they did public comment at the Affordable Housing Committee. They're usually here.
Yeah.
Evan would know who the contact person is.
Well, we can get a list from the assessor's office. I mean, it's basically what, that Casper Lane or Casper Circle?
Circle.
I don't know, it's all through.
It's Quasnet Valley and Casper Circle.
Level Lane, the Quasnet Valley condos.
Oh, so you mean like the statutory abutters? I thought you meant the folks that were just right there.
There's those two gentlemen that always come, not at all.
But the sta, so the statutory abutters would be across the street, directed abutters, and then abutters to abutters within three hundred feet.
No, they have like a, they have an ad hoc neighborhood group, you know what I mean? Um, he had a meeting with them. Evan had a meeting with them. He must have some files, there must be some files.
I can dig, you know?
Yeah.
But at the same time, we are also, I mean, I will dig, and hopefully, I mean, if we even just have all their emails, just send out an email with the link.
And you, you know, um, so those, those public comments that were submitted before, a lot of them were submitted by email. So on, on our website, there's public comments that came out, that were submitted based on the first ver, version of it. Maybe that's how we deal with it.
Yep.
Is contact all those people that submitted comments before, and let them know that it's changed and.
Oh, that'd be a good idea.
And it's.
There are a couple people who are kind of spokespeople for the Quasnet Valley.
Yep.
So you, you could ask, we could find out who they are.
I'll see if, I'll, I'll see if Hannah can pull it up. I, I think the important thing to keep in mind, though, is putting two oh nine Old Mansible Road on this doesn't mean that we have to do a project there.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So it just means that we've met the state requirement of identifying certain, like, probable locations, so.
Owned by the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right.
I mean, it's, it has to go on the list of possible town on land, cause it's owned by the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Can't ignore it, so. Um.
And it also doesn't mean that it has to be the large, multi-family unit that was initially discussed, I think, so.
That's a good direction to take it. Is rethinking whether it's, uh, homeownership, rental or homeownership.
Yeah.
I think that's a good direction to take it.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, maybe, maybe we should just notify everybody who put in a comment before. Most of them are done by email.
Yeah, I'll have Hannah look to make sure it's easily accessible, so.
God, they just put a general.
Well, so that's the other thing that we are doing, right? So, uh, I think Madam. So I think, Madam Chair, it was originally your idea, right, to have some sort of a handout at town meeting? And then we're also going to put it up on our webpage.
Are we doing a handout on that?
Well, I wanted to gauge the board to see if it's a good idea.
Oh, I thought you mentioned an announcement, like to have the town moderator announce it.
Yeah, that'd be better.
Oh, is that what you'd prefer?
Yeah, that's what I meant, just have John, see if he'll announce it.
He will.
Okay, and if that's not on the table, would there be a preference for a pamphlet?
Mary, get up and announce it.
Yeah, this is tough. I think this, the summary about the ADU bylaw.
Right, right.
But I think that if he would just announce that, that it's on our town website.
When I had talked, and I don't recall what she put in her actual email, but when I had talked to Alexis, the one of, there were multiple ideas that were kicked around, and one of the other ones, though, was a handout for this as well, not, not just for the.
I think people might get confused that the HPP is on the warrant.
Oh, if there's a handout?
Do you know what I mean? Like usually, the handouts only are, have to do with the warrant.
Okay, so preference for moderator announcement.
Moderator announcement.
But let me just ask you this, though, if it's, if that's not possible, do we want a handout or nay, just because of the confusion?
On HPP? What are you talking about, handout on what?
So it would just be a pamphlet letting folks know that the public comment period for the HPP.
We authorize you as town planner to discuss what would be best with the town moderator.
It's too confusing.
Too confusing? All right, so no pamphlet?
No pamphlet, okay.
But a sign up, though, like, before you enter, say, ask for public comments on that. You know, people can read when they walk in.
There is no warrant on this, this is for you.
Can we have Dennis wear a sandwich sign and ring a bell outside?
I'll go back and forth, the wind blowing me.
Hear ye, hear ye.
It's a town moderator.
Yeah, I think he'll do it.
Okay, very good.
I want to be a town crier.
You are. Right by the Liberty Tree. Okay. Anything else?
Not, not for me.
I can't when you, before I leave.
About what?
Just to thank you guys, that's all for putting up with me for three years.
Three years, I'm not.
I think it's my last meeting.
Oh, this is your last?
I know.
Oh, yeah.
It's like I haven't processed this yet.
It was, if I may, it was a learning experience, and I much enjoyed it. I've been involved in these town stuff for 20 years, and this has been probably the most gratifying experience that I had.
Really?
I learned a lot more about things in the town, and I would say from my own perspective that this is about as strong a board and an important a board as any. And that's not going to, I'm not just in the select board when I say it necessarily. So I appreciate your putting up with me if you did. If you didn't, I appreciate you not saying anything. I'm much like, I enjoyed it, thank you much.
Thank you, I appreciate you being on the board.
Could I just add something about this that was handed out to us? Shellback, so that Brian doesn't have to recopy this, put this in a file called Shellback and bring it out when it comes back from the Cape Cod Commission. Because it's a lot of big papers here.
Well, thank you, Michael, for stepping up to the plate, coming on to the planning board and best of luck with everything.
Yeah, because I had no intention of leaving.
No, I was glad with you.
We didn't want you to leave either.
I really had assumed.
I shed a tear.
Karen and I were going to be members of this group, you're going. I, I answered the phone one day, and as a result of that, that's what I'm doing.
Yep, yep.
So thanks.
Well, we'll miss your, your quick wit in one-liners. You certainly keep the meeting entertaining, as well as your thoughtful questions and points.
I may come as a member of the public if things don't work out.
All right, Board Member Committee Reports. Cape Cod Commission, no report, Charter Review, no report. Community Preservation Committee, we've, we had one semi-application that's, that has, is a placeholder. I'll give you more information about that as we go on. And really, that's about it. Design Review.
No meeting.
Plan Review.
Uh, no meeting.
Environmental Oversight Committee, we don't have the representative with us today. Historic District Commission.
No meeting.
This correspondence notices for town of Falmouth, Sandwich and Obanstable. There's no other item, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, okay, thank you.
I gotta ask a question.